All right, now. We're going to share screen.
Stand there and wally crap? Yep. I was out on Zoom. I'm gonna say. All right. Very good. Hey.
Okay, so we got this started. Yeah, this started.
So for what?
I mean.
You talking about.
Thank you. Morning, Beth. Good morning.
Cheers.
Uh-oh. Share something. You know, it's kind of funny before.
That's relatable.
It's funny to get up and turn around.
On schedule.
Okay.
I'm gonna call the speaking to order. Stanford.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. A regular meeting of the board of supervisors is scheduled for Friday, May 21st, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. at the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. A public hearing of the board of supervisors is scheduled for Friday, May 21st, 2021, during the regular meeting of the board of supervisors. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any comment in the board?
Yeah, I just Omar. I'm sorry. Omar, can you just give us, I mean, the water in the sewer revenue is still, we still go nowhere as far as collecting or money. Do we have any idea if we're gonna catch up and when? I can't remember what page number it's on.
Yes, sir. So if you look at age, higher than page four of the charter report, we're $12,000 behind basically yearly budget. And we're $10,000 below super. So we're right along with.
No, I'm just looking at comparing the last year. I mean, with all the homes and everything being built. Are we gonna catch up? I know there's a problem with regional meters. I mean, you've explained that, but how long do we expect?
I don't think we'll catch up to last year. I think we will catch up to the budget, so we're around basically a little bit. Not only will catch up to the year we were last year. With all the estimated reason, the meter issue, I don't think we'll catch up to last year.
I mean, eventually, though, this dollar stuff will catch up, right?
Correct. This just takes time. It's like a three-month cycle by the time you get it wrapped in three or more years.
So in this, so between now and not going, we're not gonna catch up? You don't think it's bad?
But I'm gonna catch up to full fiscal year. There's gonna be a delay past September, so it's just a continued period of work until the system.
So once we install the system, if that's the way we decide, so. Does that alleviate the problem?
Correct.
Okay. I don't fully understand.
Any other comment? Okay, public comment.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Yes. Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, resolution number 2021-05/07-11. A resolution of the Son of Lake, a Seagree Improvement District, to cancel the July 13, 2021 regular scheduled board meeting. Comments?
Any motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Four people, three people can attend or what is it? Four people can.
Count. The three people can.
The limit is three. About that. Still not up.
Well, we need, we need three or four. So, and like I said, the current policy is that the only way we can just visit them, so. Unless the board wants to consider changing that policy, we really can't.
Any more discussion? Does anybody, the staff have anything on this? Any public comment?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Discussion on the Zoom meeting. You're gonna start this?
I guess I can start. One of the. Section B, one, dash, one, two, one, three is physical projects required for supervisor participation. I'll read it. The physical forum must be present to conduct any meeting with his business. Supervisors shall not be permitted to appear by telephone and/or electronic means to participate in any meeting of the board and must be physically present at any meeting of the board in order to participate in the meeting. That is the policy. You can discuss it, you can change it, you can leave it, whatever you want to do, but it's apparently become an issue that we either need to deal with one way or the other. That is the policy.
During the COVID outbreak, obviously, there was a executive order from the governor that allowed us to do, conduct meetings electronically, but that is not in effect anymore.
So what is the issue that we're supposed to be discussing? Whether or not to change the policy or leave it as it is?
There, there's no ordinance that requires, at least not that I'm aware of, in county ordinances, that requires physical presence. The policy, the board has the ability to change policy. And it's, you know, whatever policy.
I guess my question is, why is this even being brought up?
We have several supervisors who are going to miss meetings, who have actually missed or any of these several meetings. I don't care one way or the other, it's just up to you guys. If you want to leave it like it is, that's fine with me. If you're gonna change it to participate about Zoom, that's fine too. This policy was put in back when one of the special things is, it was totally telephonic, and that's the reason it was put in. I don't even know. Play like it is, that's fine too.
So I'll answer around you. I, I'm. Like, there's no problem, why would we bring it up? If there's a problem, let's, what, why is this being brought up? What's the problem? Questions?
I have, I know that a supervisor is going to miss four more meetings this year. Physically. So. If that's okay with you, that's fine. And they can sit in and listen to him, but they cannot participate as our policy is written today. That's the reason being.
All I care about is that we have four. That's all that's necessary is a four, so.
And a forum is?
Three. Three meetings.
And we, just a comment. We did find out that, I've been told in six or eight of our board, if we miss three meetings, we're done. That is not correct. I, I also have been told, or was told, that we needed three votes to pass something. That is not correct. So we're finding out a lot of things that that I guess we all thought were ruled, and we didn't. But I just wanted to bring that up. We do have one. We can't pass stuff with three today with a two-to-one vote, or. So I just wanted to mention that. Well, then, let's leave it like it is.
Your pleasure, Beth. Yeah, but I think there's. Yeah, it's always. I agree with Beverly, that we should leave it like it is. I see no reason to change it, but I am concerned over somebody missing four meetings. Now, I don't think that's right. Unless there's a, you know, if there's an illness or something, if there's a good reason, I'll, that's acceptable. Mr. Herrick in this case, Supervisor Herrick in this case, he's got a pretty good reason for not being. And I think we all agree with that.
Right.
But if he was just taking vacations, then why aren't you here? It would be my opinion, in certain circumstances. Yeah, I wouldn't agree with that. That's just my opinion. He paying 300 a month, is he going to miss a month? The guy ain't gonna go into four meetings, how many meetings we got to do?
Twenty-four.
It's not twenty-four. Well, some of them, some of us only have one, but probably close to twenty. So I'd say that's.
I think it's.
They can, it's, that's almost missing twenty, twenty-five percent.
This year, we have twenty-one.
However, it's, the way it exists now, the way it exists now, there is no better vehicle to remove a supervisor. As I understand it, unless they're convicted of felony. This missing meeting is not intended.
Correct. Yeah, the only way to remove a supervisor is either through the governor or to do a recall.
I don't wanna sound like I'm gonna change the rules and make the rules. I'll just tell you, I'll just line right up and say, and diagnosis for meetings for personal reasons? That's a shame. He's got, I, I have challenges, his interest in contributing to the board. Or to the district. Just my opinion. There's a consensus in the board then that we do not change to allow him to do meetings. That's why I hear it.
What does that like?
I have a question, though. Is, are two supervisors on line?
Yes, sir.
And I'm.
We have a change order. We're gonna cover that.
I'll need a motion because this is a, a vote. We need to take a vote, so I require a motion so that we could proceed to discuss the resolution on this add-on item. On the add-on. It, it's a resolution, so we need to have a motion. Mm-hmm.
Oh, a motion?
Here. Second.
That was good. Morning supervisors. During one of our inspections for a driveway permit, we normally don't do, I normally don't do the three inspections myself, but since this was a slightly special case. One granada, the developer, owner wants to build a duplex. And for this duplex, they want two driveways. In moment, that's not an issue, but the surveys show that we have culvert crossing granada right in line with the driveway. On the, I guess it's the left side. So I want to inspect it to make sure, because we have to, they have to install culverts and drainage inlets to tie into our culvert so that it doesn't cause any problems, so they don't fill it in or anything. When I did my inspection, I checked the road, checked the inside of the culvert. Unfortunately, it appears it's a colder culvert, more steel culvert. Inside rusted out, and the road is a fairly large track over the top of the ground on top of the culvert. It is, it is our opinion, in order to save money down the road, to get it replaced now, I suppose to wait until maybe two or three years when it fails. Because the driveway is gonna be right in line, and we'd have to replace part of the driveway if we did it later. And I know we don't like working on private driveways if we can ever help it. Normally, it's the cost of the owner when we have to impact the driveway. So we're, we're asking that we do a change order for existing drainage project. We go ahead and replace the culvert crossing granada. I believe the price is just over 17,000. That includes a new culvert, replacement of a miter, fluid, curb repair, road repair, and traffic control measures for the contractor. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, and the owners don't pay anything?
This, this is our culvert in this case. We're just there to prevent a vacance to keep, to keep our own costs from. Potentially, they would, they would, they would pay for part of the driveway replacement, but we don't wanna, that's a sticky situation when it's our culvert causing the replacement of the driveway.
Well, I'm, I'm just, certainly from the standpoint, if it happened two years now, would they take part of the driveway like everybody else's?
Not necessarily, because it would be our fault if their driveway failed. We, we would, we would likely incur that cost.
I just wanna make sure we're in the system, as you can imagine, because you're charging people. Ready to do the.
We had a similar scenario on NIDA. There was, excuse me, it's not NIDA, Lamar. Unit two, we had an old steel culvert crossing under the road that terminated underneath their driveway, and there was no, we didn't have any records of how it was connected, but we had to do a partial replacement in the right way to repair that. So that was our cost, because it was our culvert.
So from a legal standpoint, okay? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, any public comment?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Traditions and limitations. Staff reports. And who we serve. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Got it. Uh, watchers and have my, to 490 a month. A lot of people leaving. Our, our warning notices from both enforcement are basically almost the same, about 2:20 a month, which is a lot of work for Bob, but. We also did the work up here in front of the restaurant, doing all that, the high grass and stuff. Because I actually worked for about 8 o'clock at night that night, because it was raining coming next day. So it actually worked out pretty good for us.
Mike, is there a bad time of the year to do that? Because it's still, it was pretty wet out there.
Yeah, we probably should have hit it earlier, yes. But we do wanna make some changes. I bet George, George and Joey both working on PM programs that are gonna turn into the NNI, the things that they should do every year. I mean, a lot of times, they, they knew they had to it, but they, but they never actually put it down on paper. So, so that, that will probably something to be done, probably two or three times a year, and earlier was dryer. We also wanna bring in some sand and bring up the level of land because it is really, really wet. So I got some prices on, to bring some filling, so I'll probably bring in that back to you. But obviously, if I could do it right now, so. That's been done. We. This one, real quick, Mike and I, last night, we had five girls in a golf cart. All of them were 11, 11 years old, driving golf carts on the golf, of course, one. We did check them, called their parents. Mike and I went out there and checked the degrees that they drove on, and we didn't see any damage. We were really lucky. We did contact the parents, let them know that you have to be 14 to drive a golf cart here at Son of Lake. Of course, everybody said, well, I didn't know, I didn't know, so. So I think maybe down the road, we're gonna have to do something, but.
Were they registered golf carts?
No, no, it wasn't a golfer, it was a, a renter of a home. So I don't know. So.
I have a question.
But we made them aware of it, and I wanted you guys, because even the sheriffs would chase them, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Legal, this. In the old days, you had to have a valid driver's license in the state of Florida to drive a golf cart. Is that correct, or has that changed?
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case. You have to be, they have to be, if they're a, there's, there's been a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle. I understand that a golf cart doesn't require any specific registration, but a low-speed vehicle does. A low-speed vehicle requires a windshield, turn signals, operating headlights and things like that, a golf cart doesn't. So, yeah, I don't, I believe that, I'm, I'm going on faith that Mike's correct. At 14 is the age to be able to drive it. But you may have to have adults. I need to check and see if an adult is required as well.
Please check. And if, because I know that was the case in Broward County. I don't know if it is here or not. My second question is, how much trouble is it to pass a resolution that would make that a requirement at Son of Lake?
That, I don't know, but the only thing, the one thing, it's real hard for police because security would have to be taken out.
I, I don't think that's an issue. I'm not, I'm not worried about placing it. If you get it in place and can put a flyer out to everybody, then it's the parents' responsibility, not Son of Lakes.
I agree.
Correct.
I mean, we've been, I mean, Beverly, we've been talking about this for eight years since I've been here, that, that, you know, make the parents responsible. But, you know, the law is, I mean, we've contacted, you know, the police departments, and, and, you know, we've had them out here, and the law is 14.
14, nice.
That they can drop.
I can, I can do some research, but I think probably that the only real teeth that the district has is the ability to, to assess people. We could do a special assessment against someone potentially, if they violate, or, you know, or against the property owner. There's a property owner, and then there's a renter. In this case, we've got a renter. The renter's not gonna care, we, you know, may not care if we enforce something against the property owner, unless the property owner's gonna find out the violation of their regular agreement. So, but I can do some research and come up with some. It's a lot.
Thank you.
We also, Yan and I and Bob Phillips, the sheriff's department, there was an article in the paper about animals, picking up the animals, robs and caskets on the lake. And we were going by a lot of different rules than the. But we did meet with that department and explain to them what we were doing about. We usually keep, keep the animals four or five days, maybe sometimes 10 days. We either find the elders or. I would probably say 99% of the animals that are dropped off here are people dropping off. Because we've learned a lot out back, you know, like this, the amount of cars. So there was an article in the paper on Sunday, I think it was, Sunday, Monday, about that. So we did meet with the sheriff. We've been working with them a lot closer. When we pick animals up, they'll post them, we also posted, I think posted them on, on Facebook, whatever. But we did meet with them, so I just want to let you know that. The grinders on, on Edgewater, also. As a matter of fact, I got an email from the owner of the company with a kid that, kind of, footnet. He's going back to work on Monday. Everything's good on it. I guess he's gonna have to have a lift in the queue. But, I mean, I guess that worked out a lot better than it would have. So I just want to let you know that. Also, we have a generator down, down on number four that we plan on changing that next year, and I just found out this yesterday afternoon, you know, and so I just wanna bring it up to you. It's over 25 years old. It runs the whole land down there. And during our inspection, we have inspections on the, the generators. During the inspection, it, it's gonna cost us $10,000 to get it up, to make sure it works every time. So I had Joey go out and get some estimates of what it would cost to, what it would cost us right now to, to install a new one instead of waiting till next year, instead of spending $10,000 to keep the plant running. I, I think we should move that, that item to this year and save the $10,000. Cost of a new one is 47,000.
You have 25,000, but you haven't spent the generators, you have?
We are still, well.
Well, I'll spend that money for that, so it's worth a new generator.
Well, the, well, the, well, the 25,000 that we have are the ones we have scheduled to do this year.
I understand.
This generator is not scalable till next year, but because of the condition we want it to. Well.
We've only got one that's.
We've already ordered the other one, it's being made now.
Oh, Michael, come on. There's always these.
Well, what do you want me to do?
Common sense says.
I'm telling you.
You don't have to lie.
We wanna hear, okay? Okay, do we wanna spend $10,000 now and fix it?
Your idea is right, but they had $25,000.
That's fine.
You had 25 grand.
We have $25,000 for the ones that we replace them.
Well, you could have, you're replacing it because you don't.
We didn't know, right?
Waited in there and.
Right, and maybe we didn't know until we did the inspection, okay? Okay, when they inspected, they do the service, we don't know that. So say, can you take your car and it needs something? You know, you don't know that. Listen, that's fine, if you wanna put the 10 grand into it, that's fine, but I think.
That's not what I said.
Well, that's what you said to me.
No, it's not. You're gonna, if you're gonna quote me, you gotta get it right.
All right, well, we'll have to sit down and quote each other then. But, I mean, listen. The 25 is our respect. It's being made, right? You think I like coming up here and spending my money too? I live here too, you know? And I think sometimes you forget that.
You got anything else, Mike?
You feeling good?
Yeah, I feel good now.
Who's next?
There's no 40, can I just say one thing? There is no $47,000 in the budget, actually, for a generator.
Well, we have stuff for, right, we have stuff for ma, wait, we have stuff for maintenance, okay? We won't spend that 10,000, we'll only spend the 37,000. If we don't fix it, we don't spend the 10,000, right?
But you need some made-in-the-castle. We've already bought a new castle.
You're right, but we need. You're right, you're right, but we didn't, we, we expected to do it next year, right? We wanted to replace this generator next year.
I'm saying it's a cast for next year, he's not included.
I'm just telling you what's going on. Now, at the last meeting, one of our members thanked us for bringing stuff to him, right? That, that they didn't allow to pass, and that's what we do, okay?
Wow. Do you ever think of becoming a lawyer?
So Dan, what do you want to do with this?
We, what are you asking me to do?
I think, instead of putting the ten grand in the fixing it, I think we should, should take buying one and put, put in next year. So I'm asking for an extra thirty-seven thousand dollars.
I think you can.
Right, okay, all right. I just want to bring it up to where I'm.
Love. You can write, I mean, next week.
Next.
So I got a couple of things just up ahead of you. Today, we're starting a bunch of discussions, they were on golf fund, next week we have the general fund. As part of those discussions, we're gonna be considering assessment rates, utility rates. Next week, we have a meeting with the county interest meeting. We'll see district benefits from employees, what that percentage increase will be. So all these options will be back in for that first meeting session, which you have the next week, November twenty-first. We also have discussions going with the billboard proposition. So we have a meeting scheduled for next week to discuss that proposition and renegotiate some of the time these guys presented. Not sure if we'll make the twenty-first deadline for that, for that meeting, but yeah, the twenty-first is going right after.
They're gonna come back in and make the presentation.
So we presented them the idea of the items that the board did not want to consider. So the short term, limiting some of the advertisements that were going on there. And then we can share some of the, you know, how many slots we could get.
So who's gonna bring the supply to them?
They're gonna bring back, we're hoping we can tell them what we want, them to revise their draft and then bring you a new proposition and a presentation.
Deal break.
Right, okay. So that's still in the works, we got that going. Last thing I want to surprise you with is foreclosure. District is initiating foreclosure, so in case you get phone calls, we'll be ramping up the center of the man, the certified notice or the link notice in April, giving them thirty days, they have responded, so we can start to do foreclosure action. That is in conjunction with phase five, foreclosures that are also being initiated. We had one for twenty-three properties, which only just settled. And phase five is just initiated with another thirty or so. We actually have a representative from the phase five on here to discuss them, so if you have any questions, that's available. So just wanted to leave a follow-up of that. Any questions?
No, I don't. Mike, are you ready? Mike over.
Good morning supervisors, I have a few things here to update with. We were asked a couple of questions about the practice funding ring across the street adjacent to the stack shack. That should be open today, after they did a round of verification of the cores and top dressing, so that should be back open today. They're also out there, they should be starting their work on the right side of number nine deer, the drainage. Provided that it's not too wet right in our personal lane, that work will continue, the staff. We'll also continue to clean up the areas on two, four and five deer, where we removed the large oak trees. And also, we still have quite a bit of cleanup work to do, there was hog damage. So all that will continue here probably over the next several weeks, to be cut out on others. On the restaurant side, just wanted to update the board that we currently have over four hundred reservations for our Mother's Day brunch. To be honest, really, that surprised me, I think, I think that's really, really good. It outperformed my expectations, which was probably around three hundred, so that's exciting. That just shows that folks are getting a little more comfortable coming out. The annual chamber banquet is this coming Tuesday, the eleventh. Just wanted to remind the board that the restaurant will be closed for dinner on Tuesday night. This event historically is in January, it's the last Thursday in January, I believe, is the historical date. That was rescheduled to allow us to do COVID. We are revising our summer hours of operation due to the board's concerns with our original proposal. We will update the board, I'll update you guys this week, prior to notifying the membership and public. And those hours are still proposed to start June first, so we have about three weeks before they start. And I will update you guys this week with that proposal.
I'm sorry, what?
Hours of operation for the restaurant, for the summer.
Oh, you're gonna give it to us before you give it to that?
Yes, I'll update you guys this week before we notify the public.
I think we ought to have it, I think we ought to discuss it at a meeting.
We absolutely can, we discussed it in our meeting, we discussed it in our meeting two weeks ago, which is where we came up with our revisions.
That's up to, that's up to the majority here, right? I know you don't care about the.
Sure, we're running a pretty tight deadline, I mean, we have the twenty-first, if you want, I can send you that proposal. You guys can approve it on the twenty-first if you'd like. I mean, it does, I mean, I guess it's about a week or so to get it out. I'm the only one that cares, just that would be the. You'll be, you'll be happy with it. And we've addressed your concerns about not being open on Wednesday nights from Sunday nights, so we added that back in. And we're just finalizing that, also, these are changes for what, June first? Correct, they'll be coming out June first, is when we will change the hours of operation, as we proposed two weeks ago.
You're putting Wednesday back in.
Correct, that's the, that's really the major change. We had to slide some events from Tuesdays to Tuesdays, basically. Except that they may wreck me out.
The original proposal was Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, yeah. I just got a formal.
Which is what?
Correct.
To board a request.
I will formalize that, continue this week. The board is asking to put together a plan to spend the capital for improvements in this, in the bank room here. I am working with Kelly Conspirator at Griffin's Carpet Mark to assist me with that. I'm also working with our national partners for some furniture. I have a proposal quite ready yet, but as soon as I do, I'm geared to you, so you guys can approve it. I just wanted to update you guys through that process.
Did we guys have the last meeting?
Yes, you asked me to, the board might ask me to put together, I had asked the board to go ahead and allow me to use that capital as it was frozen earlier in the year with COVID. The board said they would be happy to do so, but they want me to bring them a plan of how I was gonna spend that money. So I am putting that plan together now, working with some partners to come up with some accurate pricing so I can bring it to, to the board for approval, so we can get that done, and this is going to be here.
I'm, I'm going right there, is there money allocated or ready that you just gotta cash?
Yes.
So listen, say, this is how.
So we had forty thousand dollars in our capital budget for current fiscal year. We had spent about ten thousand of outside furniture, so we've got thirty thousand dollars left in this current budget. That's for the upgrading this room here that was frozen. The board had asked us not to spend capital until we knew where we were at. So in previous board meetings, I had asked the board if I could go ahead and spend the other thirty thousand dollars. And the board requested me to provide them a plan of how I was gonna spend that money.
They're about spending it this year, will it be in the future?
No, I want to spend it this year, I'm gonna spend it this summer, so I am working as, as fast as I can to get you that home, okay? So I don't want to spend any money that I didn't know. Just wanted to also update the board that Saturday, May twenty-second, we have our Swatoma Adult Child Tournament. We have that here every year. That is the kickoff event for the Swatoma Junior Tour season, which is a very positive thing for our community, to promote junior golf, I just want you guys to know, you'll see that, that's Saturday, May twenty-second. That's all I have for the board, unless you have questions back.
I just, I asked you about it, but I, the board bothering, the rest of the board bothering them a bunch, beverage cart. And you're reading it?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're trying to fix that in-house. We have two beverage carts, one is quite old that we were planning on replacing in our capital projects this year. But we did not do so as we only needed one cart until the time through the COVID situation. We were using our newer cart, but the newer cart has since had an issue now, so that one is down and out for repairs. So we've been using the gators from the maintenance staff to operate a beverage cart around the golf course. So we'll get that hook of cart up and running and if we want to replace the other one, we'll, we'll work through that process later. Right now, only the off-season is not an issue.
Okay, and this would just be that, I think that other cart, the last discussion we had, I don't think that's going to go anywhere. We don't need to.
Most of the times, there's certain times we might, and, and if we do, then we have, I had no issue using, using a gator from the, from the maintenance staff as an alternative for cart, it probably actually works better, so they're more durable, but.
Okay.
So that's not a problem.
What else for another discussion?
Mike, the ice machines that are out on golf courses, especially on deer, are getting fixed. The one on the backside of deer is, is broken, no ice is coming out Monday.
I'm sorry, I was unaware of that, I will, number, do you want to say number fifteen?
That's correct.
They're all missing their trays too.
I don't mind them trays, I just want my ice.
I mean, we're gonna, we gotta have them, right? Oh, these junk is what they are. Are the golf carts, are the bar carts, why don't you buy the bullet, let's see what you really got? Because you're gonna need to run two of them come September. And you're not, and you're not in a position to do that.
It's very possible we could, and, and like I said, the gators work very well, so anytime we need an extra one for right now, I'm comfortable.
Why don't we get out of there?
I can put together a proposal, bring it in the board for a new beverage cart if that's what you'd like, I'm fine with that.
I mean, you guys are supposed to tell us, we're telling you that they're not working, that running a gator on the golf course is not truly acceptable. I have, I heard one of the gators broke down recently trying to be a bar cart. But, huh? That's black tar, that's black tar. I mean, why don't we get out of there, then if, if we need to replace them, let's plan it appropriately and do it.
Yeah, that's no issue, and, and I don't see it as an issue with the, with the gators as well.
A gator is not a bar cart, because we don't buy the gators to be bar carts.
Okay, I think the board proposal for a new, a new next fiscal year, we'll put it back on the capital list.
And I agree, we have a new water machine. I mean, whatever it takes to fix them, Mike, you gotta do that for it.
Yeah, I worked with Mr. Hurley at those end of thing, and.
I mean, most of them.
It's a good ice.
Maybe twice, it's not.
Yeah, they're, I don't know if it's an accident issue or not, I'll give it Mike, who will visit all the ice machines.
Hey, Mike, did you already have the staff with you? How was the area?
Operation went well, they only had to remove the golf cart. I say only, it didn't sound too great, but it could have been much worse, she's doing well.
I didn't know she was ill.
Yeah, she, yeah, the issue was a couple of weeks ago and I, I almost had a test. And I went on the, we were doing the golf, I was waiting, and she told me that the doctor said she couldn't come back to work for two weeks. But she has flat profit, so she probably didn't start signing the next week, before she could go on. But she's doing well.
General counsel.
Yeah, like Omar said, we, it looks like we have settled, the, it was four, it was four foreclosures that we initiated on behalf of the board. It was really only one person, four individual companies called, run by the same person. I spoke to his attorney on Tuesday and was informed that all the settlement documents have been received, executed, and so I'm just waiting for them to get to me, so that they can be reported, and then we'll be able to dismiss those suits. We'll be moving forward with another, another list of properties that the board has given us. It's a total of ninety-eight lots owned across thirty-five different owners, so I'm gonna kind of prioritize the, the larger property owners first, for the larger amounts, and hopefully get those ramped up next week. The Avanti suit, still waiting to hear back from Mr. Lefoni, but the last conversation I had with them, I was understanding that they would be filing their response five in the day today. So hopefully that will happen, and we have the case management conference set for into June, I believe, June twenty-second. But we'll go in and have a conversation to judge how best one of, progress, but this is.
General manager.
Quite a few things that are in the process. I had a email yesterday, they told me the rules of water, they have all the information from us if they need. What can I report now to come back and tell us, this is what we recommend that we do with meters as well, as the water, like sewer plants, and the waste water and sewers. So we should have that within thirty days.
I'm sure we wanted to hear it.
Sure, thanks a lot. We also, Aron lined up the forces up with the grant, basically, they write grants, basically, to cover this. He felt that we would be able to cover at least part of the meters with a SRF, mistake, the volume fund loan, which is twenty years, ten to twenty years, depending on the piece of light. So we wouldn't necessarily have to spend our reserves. When we did the budget, we put it in as a worst-case scenario that we'd next year pay them, they were too out of our reserve. So you may have options there. He's also exploring grants for the playground that we put into the recreation plan. And I told him, see what's available on pools, if you can get enough money, we might move that one up too. So it just depends, we don't really know at this point in time. Had to get the master plan done before he could then start. I have finally got three quotes from a human resources firm that say that within thirty days, we'll have an initial pass, sixty-day final product, we're gonna do all of our job descriptions, our job grades, and salary scales. So we should be in pretty good shape there in a couple of months. Our board's checking. Just so you know, apparently the rumors are true that harder holes are being sold for housing development. Kind of a shame in one way, and obviously we have too many golf courses here. So from that standpoint, it could be good for us. We have contacted Jason, I think Jason's last name.
Lynn.
Yeah, about harder hole tournament, which is a little bit large, women's amateur tournament in the same country. He didn't want to talk about it until I pretty much started all done, so he's supposed to call us back. We have also been contacted by the sixth golf, asking about if our, our appetite for hosting female tour, in some. Had a couple of conversations on there, I'm, I'm not sure we have as much appetite for that one as we do for the ladies. I want to grow back, we just said, sure, we'll talk to anybody. Deal with that, is if they have to raise enough money to actually put it on. That's not gonna be our deal. If it actually works, we'll then move those apart, that they would take us for the musical. Mike dropped out a couple of things, we have, we have the upcoming Monday to start taking out the dead pine trees that are all around in the, in the golf, just to start off with, have at least a couple, a fallout of them, those in the last winter. We want to make sure that get, get better, and guys, but there's a lot of them, and we have pine beetles and once you get them. This is gonna be on ongoing process. Then let me start with some, um, right. Yes. At one point in time, the HOA of Woods and Arms put in some landscaping that hasn't been maintained, and they no longer wish to be there, so it looks pretty bad. So a lot of people are gonna go in and take take it out, or nothing, they have the trees just destroyed and.
Okay, thank you, man. Uh, just, just a comment. I want you to saw the papers from the, it's on the front page, it heard, it heard it's closing. But again, in the article, it said, nothing's confirmed yet. It wasn't the front page. Unfinished pages? New business?
None.
Maybe even worse.
None.
Omar coming?
Good morning, Congress President. I'm trying to make a quick comment here. Two of them went with the, uh, these Zoom meetings, was that gonna continue?
Yeah. That wasn't part of our conversation, so I assume we will.
It was, it was discussed earlier, but there was no public comment on it. It's a Zoom meeting, are they gonna continue?
I think they're gonna be continued. Chris is gonna continue to broadcast them on Zoom. But there, no one can participate, no other supervisors can participate through Zoom.
We're only talking about us.
Well, Zoom meetings are, are a better idea because you have a visual, at least, because years ago, they tried with the telephone, and it was very disruptive with startups that meetings. Somebody would be in Massachusetts or in some other state, and it, they keep on saying, are you there? Are you there? People are waiting, and it really disrupted the, the flow of conversation. So, uh, I'm not in favor of telephone conversation, but the Zoom seems to be a better alternative, okay? All right, the second thing, I heard something about Hottolaw. Does anybody understand that what happened down there? They've, they've sold the golf course. Perhaps going to be nine hole golf course, so I have to address that to Mike, maybe he knows something about it, whether they're gonna do, uh, the Futures going over to the municipal golf course, or they're gonna just eliminate it, because it's a lot of history in that, uh, in that golf course, and it's the first tournament of the year probably for the Futures. So, um, we're not saying that we have it here, might be a good idea, if we could fit it in the schedule. But is there anything going on with that Futures out there?
That's what I said, we talked to Jason, he's going to call us back. Jason is the governor of Hottolaw.
Yes, correct. He had three golf courses at one time, and only, anyhow, I couldn't hear the comments, so, uh.
Okay, yeah, we're working on it. That's it.
Oh, good. It'd be a good idea, because the talent that those young girls have, and they're just starting out, and they, as I say, the history of all the all the girls playing on the, on the, on their regular tour, a lot of post-graduates came from Hottolaw, so it's, uh, it's an interesting concept. Thank you.
And Swanson? I kind of got something about that. Zoom meetings too, and I'm kind of in agreement, it's kind of hard to have anybody pay attention. And the thing that concerns me is, uh, if we have enough people that are gone six months out of the year, how invested are they? Things go bad here, they sell their house, and they stay where they came from. That's why they're going back, because that's their point. As far as the carts go, when you stop a cart, or you talk about these kids, how fast that cart go? Does anybody know? Did anybody ask them? Because if that cart's going fast enough, it's supposed to have seatbelts, it's supposed to have license, it's supposed to be insured. You can't drive them, and like, if it goes over 25 miles an hour, I know for sure it's not even supposed to be on Sun and Lake Boulevard, unless it goes at least 25 miles an hour. Because that's 35 mile an hour speed. As far as the other carts go, they're allowed to be on the road as long as it's, if they're not over 20 miles an hour, and they don't go on a 35 mile an hour speed. The third thing is, I don't understand why we don't require the people that are on board to hear you around, typically. I mean, how invested in something are you if you're on the air six months out of the year, to be honest? I don't know. Maybe a lot, maybe not. And I'm not trying to say anything about any particular person not being invested, but to me, if you're invested, you spend your time when you're invested. The third thing is, on the carts that people, the carts people have, that aren't part of, part of membership, pay trail fee. Uh, first of all, I think there should be signs wherever you drive onto the course that say something like, no unauthorized carts, carts are allowed on this course, and if you're caught, you're a trespass. I'm not much trouble with being of signs. The third thing is, can Sun and Lake require people that have golf carts and use the roads within the perimeter to be insured? Can they require that? Do they require us to have it? I don't know. And the last thing is this ball thing that they're going to want in the driving range. Probably 10% of the guys in this club can hit a ball 250 yards, make. That's a real big number for that. Might, probably closer to 4 or 5%. So 90% of the people are going to be penalized on the driving range because they can't work flags and try and know what their distances are. And I don't think that's fair. No, that's just me, because I spent a lot of time there, and I'm gonna hate it if all of a sudden I'm in a wedge 100 yards, and now it's only going 50. I mean, what's the point? What's the point of having a driving range if you can't do it? And who, who, who damaged property? I never heard about anybody damaging any property, but apparently it was damage, they would have decided to do this. Wouldn't it be simpler? You're gonna move the one sand trap and stuff over on the course over here by 18th, so you're no longer gonna have a problem over there. People over in that area. So you just keep the, the, the stands far enough over that people aren't likely gonna hit anything over there. And if somebody does, I bet it'd be 1 in 100 that would hit anything of consequence. And, uh, I guess that lot covers all my bitching and pissing. See if somebody could give me some. The insurance part, best, because I know, without a doubt, there's a lot of carts around here that go over 25, and if they get an accident, you think the lawsuit's gonna just include those people that hit them? It's gonna include Sun and Lake. They're gonna try and hold Sun and Lake responsible.
Dennis, that makes sense, one, one thing for you. On the balls, when you go where the driving range, I have a home people appeal in my office. Now, my office is beyond, okay? And all the balls I pick up are right by my door. My, my, my car got hit, and I got hit.
Okay, so sign up to the, you know, stop people from hitting the ball, or put a sign up, this is a 200 yard range, and.
Dennis, Dennis, we know it's not the members.
Right.
We know that.
Okay.
None, none of us can hit the ball.
I've asked before why they don't spend 200 or 300 bucks. You put some cameras showing where you park, showing the range, and showing them the, the machine. For a few hundred bucks, and a camera there, you can see some guy come up and steal balls, which I've seen, I mean, thousands of dollars worth of balls every year. It happens all the time.
Listen, we went through all, all the best possibilities we could. This was a decision we made, the balls are on order. So they're gonna come in, right, let me finish. They're gonna come in, if we find out you made a mistake, we'll adjust it. But right now, it's gonna happen.
How come there's, is there any surveillance, surveillance on the range? I mean, it happens all the time.
Under the conditions, under the conditions that we're running the range, this was the best bet.
Okay, I went over there the other day, this is the truth, it was six buckets. It was 25 the day before. Six. So if you don't think you have a gut problem over there, you're up and you're sleeping. It's just like every business that I've ever run into. The biggest problem is always internal, and people that are there all the time. You go to Walmart, if they have gut problems, that's why they got all those cameras to stop their employees from stealing, because that used to be the problem. That's, you know, whatever, do what you want.
Any, Dennis, any other public comment? Okay, discussion due from the board?
Okay, so I brought up something the other day, and with Michael. Michael, you're gonna love this. And I'm not sure we should do this, or it's the right thing to do, but with all the tree cutting, I brought this up to Dan, with all the tree cutting that we're gonna be doing now, and over the next seven years, we don't have a shredd. And I know there's concerns over the safety, you know, using one, but is that something we should consider?
You're saying that's.
And I'm just asking you a question.
All right, well, I'm gonna tell you what I think. I think the shredder saves us a lot of money, in the long run. dumpsters cost us a lot of money to remove. We rented a shredder, uh, we went there two or three times, both departments have used it, and it's worked well. It's easier to keep the place clean over there and everywhere else, have been shredded. Now, we, um, I still think we should get it, and I'm always gonna keep it. I have it where I came from, and, uh, uh, we never had any problems. So, yes, I think we need a shredder. But I'm not asking for it, because.
I know you're not, but I'm, here I am.
Right, exactly.
No, I would like to see it put in, if you, if the boy has no luck, to the budget and see if it could work.
And I think the cost somewhere was around 35 or 40,000 dollars, but what we spend on.
On generators.
We need it. All right, I know you could try to set me up, but anyways, yes, yes, Michael, you were creating.
Yes, and if I make a comment, I, when we rent a chipper, the same people are using that chipper that would use the chipper if we owned it. So I don't see that as being a liability issue.
And, and if we had to, you know, we're gonna have the same, like, four or five guys use the chipper, and if there's a, a training for that, uh, which the, the person that brought one out to us did, did say that he would do some training for us, so, I mean, I.
Put it in your budget, and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one other question. Can you hear us? An update 18 and 12? Do we have an update on 18 and 12? Well, I don't know.
Um, the update is, there is no update. I'm still waiting on the Mr. Carter to get his answer out, and accounting personnel was to what we have to do to get this thing issues off, we know how many fortresses there are there, uh, in those particular areas, but.
No way that the candidate could get back to us.
Correct.
And then I assume, just a couple of issues that we once upon a time discussed, that we have to go back to the strategic action plan, I assume we'll revisit that in the name of Prester?
Yeah, we were supposed to do that. We had people out the last two weeks, but it would have been done already, but so once we get everybody back.
Okay, then the job descriptions, that's gonna be taken care of by this, this company that we're gonna hire.
Correct.
And they're gonna do yours, ours, everything, everything.
The, uh, the bid was about 6,500 dollars to do all of that, and to do the job descriptions as well as, uh, pay grades, all that.
To raise that, I know we said the first meeting. What about the second meeting?
So the, the issue is, we have to, there has to be a specific resolution that talks about the exact amount. So we have a plan. Meyer's saying that we're gonna put it on the speaker for the next meeting to adopt the resolution about how that plan is gonna be enacted. Once that resolution is adopted, that is what we publish, and we only have to publish it the once. So that is how.
I thought we already advertised something for the 21st.
For the, yeah, for the, for the 21st, but we have to have, the process goes, we have to have a resolution which definitely has to be published, or the resolution's gonna be done on the 21st. We'll have a, a public, we've advertised that to be a public meeting, but then once that resolution, assuming that resolution gets adopted, then we have to publish that resolution. And then we have another meeting after the public resolution.
Okay, so we publish it like a couple of weeks, and then, so probably by the end of July, we should.
Kurt, I don't think anything's slowing the plan down. I think everything is going the way the plan is supposed to, but as far as our implementation of the special assistance.
So we'll be done with those table, like, stuff like that.
Well, that's reasonable, I'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Anything else to add, do you?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting for about 10 minutes, and then we'll get back to the workshop.
He said delay happened, all right?
Is he letting you do it?
No, I don't know, he messed around in the bathroom.
He knew, he knew the guy was coming, so he decided.
Bolton? You saying Bolton?
Okay, we'll call the speaking. Go ahead, your host, talk to us. Be a comedian, do so.
You don't want my jokes. I will get banned. There he comes. Supposed to run to the bathroom, not from it.
Okay, supervisors, I'm sure everybody has their packet. Did everybody get, um, I, I put on everybody's little other packet here with, um, some other proposals as far as membership rates, but that's where I'd like to get started is on page seven in your packet. Obviously, we've had some individual discussions, and we've and we've had some different ideas, and just, uh, obviously, this is just a discussion to see what would you like me to bring back to the next budget meeting. So starting on page seven, the original proposal was a 3% flat rate increase, so we did a 3% increase on the full family and full single, and those rates, family was an increase of 142, 65, and the increase for a single was 99, and then you took those amounts to the subsequent family and singles at the same rate. Uh, and obviously, we had several discussions with every supervisor about that, and, uh, some of the board members and Dan had asked me to put together alternate plans, which is in the other packet here. Do we want to have any discussion on that point right now, or do you think, look at the alternatives?
Sorry, without talking about percentage increase, put that aside. I want to first talk about the way we're going to go down, applying that whatever percentage it is. We spent the last three years with the formula of a way to defend each membership that we had. For example, we said, family, uh, summer single is gonna be 75% of the total single, and we worked out percentages so that if anybody ever challenged us, that we would be able to say, this is how we did, whether you like the number or not. And I, we've done that, I think this time, about three years ago, and I believe you're here for that, but and then we, we had two problem areas, the over 85 and the over 80s, that we said we'd give three years to get that in line because it was just too much of a rate increase for, uh, that would be unfair. So I would like to go and, and whatever percentage we come up with, apply it the same way we've been doing it the last three years, and keep it consistent.
Understandable. I'll take some of the blame on that, because I was unaware of it. And I know I, I kind of discussed some things with Dan. And I know I, I kind of discussed some things with Dan and Mike on it, and we kind of went that way. In the second half of that packet that Mike gave you, that is there on, off the percentage off base rates. It went back to the original way, way the board has been doing it, justifying rates. The difference there is really nothing, it's six hundred dollars. So we're, we're not talking any monetary difference, so, you know, at this point, I would certainly agree that if that's the, the way the board has adopted it, we just kind of go away from even the flat rate look and just go to, just set it off the base rate.
We're playing how we came up with the numbers.
Understandable.
Just saying, you know.
Correct.
Sure, that being said, is that the consensus of the board, because we can cut this in half if that's the general consensus?
That would be...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so...
All the time we spent the last two, three years doing this, I don't wanna change it.
Okay, so we can take, uh, page one and page three, which are two and four. Obviously, we've had, uh, a lot of discussion on, you know, in our pro forma, we had percent, a, a three percent increase, but, uh, you know, since that, we've, we've kind of committed ourselves to some pretty large capital, uh, projects going into next year. Uh, the sum of one point seven, one point eight million. Uh, and some of the discussion we've had with, with the individual supervisors was the possibility of, um, increasing the membership by more than three percent. So if you take those other two proposals, there's a three percent increase and a five percent increase in that format. I don't know if we will have that discussion.
Before we get into percentages, let's talk about the big boy that we have to all agree on. And that is you're recommending not doing the fifty-off promotion.
Yeah, but I'm gonna get to it.
We could decide if we wanna continue with that, not do it, change it, or eliminate it. Right? So you decided to eliminate it, what was your reason behind it?
So we proposed to eliminate it, um, you know, in discussions with, with Brian. First off, we feel that our, you know, starting next year, we should see our, all of our membership return. We've added the membership, uh, really very, very thorough, um, and then put our forecast in here. Uh, so we feel our membership is going to be very, very healthy next year. But also, uh, the discussion of there's a lot of new construction and a lot of new folks who may be residing. So our membership should grow organically without, uh, a large promotion. Um, and just...
Again, with the housing sales in boom right now, we have people moving here. The idea is, do we give a discount to, or would they buy anyways, right? The person, if I, if I moved in here, I moved into a golf community just two weeks ago, I will buy a membership. I will not get a discount. It doesn't matter, part of me wanting, choosing the place I went to live was it was the ability to go play golf and join groups and have camaraderie. So that's there, are we giving a discount to people that would join? And at some point, you know, the argument would be, yeah, we give them a discount, it's for loyalty, they'll join again and again and again. But we're, you know, with the house, with the conditions, you know, ultimately, what we've found in the past is you join or rejoin if you perceive value out of it. If you're playing enough golf to justify it, you'll rejoin your membership. So the, the real question came down to, are there other promotions that could help the club and not discount so much? We do have a handful of people that have joined outside of the Southern Lake District. I believe it's like ten or twelve. You know, and those kind of, they can only join once for that and be eligible for that program. So it's, it's one of those thoughts, I know we threw out some ideas of either a different percentage that we can do. If you think, you know, personally, I think fifty's too high, but that's my professional opinion. It's your, you guys live here, it's your club, if you think, you know, you've been through this, you decided on fifty, if you wanna stick with that, we can certainly stand behind it. If you wanna go cut it in half, go thirty-three percent, we can discuss those. We can offer other programs, I know we've discussed offering, you know, brand new members, a thousand dollar gift card to the restaurant. It would only cost us our cost of goods at that point, so it's a lower discount and more of it would flow to the bottom line. So it's kind of a financial decision on what we wanna be in if, you know, obviously, anytime that we discount, we're looking to drive funds and drive additional players. So at that point, if we're, you know, if our attrition rate is higher than our new member sign up, then certainly we, we would have to look to go outside the community to become members. So that was kind of the thought process behind it.
Any comments?
Well, I'll go first. I think we should offer something. Um, I, I like the deal that we offer now. I'm open to if the board decided to change the percentages because things look so much better now than they used to be. But I think to offer something is still an enticement to people, I think that's still a personal. I don't know how you guys...
You're looking at the ball person, I don't think you offer anything. I agree with the budget assessment proposed. I don't think we need to offer fifty percent. Especially in this market.
Right, and it's, that's not to say that, you know, in the future, if, if, if things change that we couldn't bring it back, I mean, in, in subsequent years, I mean, we can always...
So we got one on one.
I would, uh, agree with everyone. This, I would, we can bring it back if we have to.
Yeah, if we start to see decline in membership, I mean, it's okay, sometimes we can...
And my token is personal, I, I haven't ran into anybody that's a member here that likes it. And I'm going by the way your recommendation is. And, uh, you know, I can always bring it back, but it's just, when I came here, I'm sure when Ray came here and Beverly came, we, we were gonna be with us. And, um, I'd like to try and go back to the way it used to be, and if it isn't, I'll, I'll go along with whatever rate might have or some other supervisor that I just need to...
Yeah, I know, I agree that you meet here to play golf, the majority of us, unless you're directly associated with the hospital, which a lot of our, our home sales are, but even then, a lot of times the doctors will join anyway. Maybe not, which is...
Okay.
Two to one?
All right, we will keep it.
I'm gonna do three of them.
Yeah.
We're having the four to one, right?
Yeah, I'm like, two to one sounds so much better.
All right, so we will keep that as is?
No, we're not gonna lock, so I mean, uh, because they had talked to us about, talked to me about food, you know, perhaps something else.
Uh, well, I, I think for right now, we can keep this as is, and we won't offer a promotion of any kind at this time. It's something that we could...
Revisit it.
We could revisit it and feel it's necessary.
All right, but we gotta keep this for at least a year, right? No, 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 it can't, it's gonna happen right after a year.
I would assume we would do it for a year.
Otherwise, a year is a lot of...
We're fine with that.
We're fine with that, I, I...
The other question would be, when are we cutting off the current fee?
I would suggest that we would do it on September thirtieth.
How physically your stuff's...
October first.
Yeah, it's gotta be September.
Can we do it anywhere, or does that make sense to do it?
That would be up to you, obviously, I would recommend doing it earlier because everyone who is going to sign up, September thirtieth, right?
I would take it, probably David, I know we posted these rates.
Did we post it, did we post the fifty percent? Were we talking about the rates or were we talking about the potential discount?
It was the membership rates, it was...
The membership rates.
I think, I think the membership rates are for the best for you.
I'm pretty sure.
We gotta keep it till...
We have to, yeah.
I can check, I mean, we may be, we may be able to publish a new rate system, but...
Couple more months either way.
Well, to be honest with you, I would adjust the budget slightly. Because we're gonna expect people to join in September, once the word gets out it's going away. So...
How's the word gonna get out?
Well, it's a public meeting, it's on Zoom. We have crowd.
So, I mean, I guess we can see if there's anything we can...
I don't think it's gonna be a major adjustment, don't get me wrong, but...
David, could you check, would you?
Yeah.
So we have an option.
So that brings us then down to the percentages, right?
Well, since we're on that topic, I, I had presented, um, a few months ago about, uh, a potential Twilight membership. Um, and, and I have to apologize, I, I swear I had an email all typed out, ready to go with, um, what those numbers were. I can do it verbally for you right now. I can have the computer come up. Um, we had proposed that we would do a, a single Twilight membership. Um, we estimated that a, a person that would pay, play two and a half rounds a week. This would be, um, after three thirty. Uh, which, if they played two and a half rounds a week, there'd be a hundred and thirty rounds. Uh, it'd be about fifteen dollars a round, and that total cost would be nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. A family Twilight membership would be about four rounds a week, as we estimated that, would be a total of two hundred and eight rounds. At fifteen dollars a round, and that would be a total of three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Um, so if you compare those to the actual memberships on here, um, there is a little bit of a discount there. Um, I know we kind of have seven or eight, uh, I think seven folks lined up that would, that have kind of said they would like to do that. Uh, so that's why I wanted to present to the board, and we can table this maybe to our next discussion if you'd like. As I can give you some more information, and you can think about it since I failed to get you that information.
How many memberships do you expect?
Seven.
I wouldn't waste with that.
That's just seven we know of, I mean, that, there's probably a lot of people out there that I may have not spoken to that would find this to be appealing. Especially those folks, you know, in ice shoes that, that work and can't get out during the day. Uh, it could, it could appeal to other folks, that, these are, these are just folks that we know of, and frankly...
I, I personally think we have too many memberships in there, I mean, if you look at the sheet, you, junior executive, eighteen, twenty-five, one. These membership on the great team result.
Right.
I mean...
And, and, and this, and so these seven folks are, and currently in our fifty percent off program, um, of which six of those will expire, I think around September. That will re, will not rejoin any of the capital other than this because it's six guys that work every day. They get together two, three times a week to go out and play after three, and they get off work, so... I mean, obviously, it's under board suppression, um, I feel it's benefiting us, whether it's six or twenty, but, um...
Missed a question in my mind, Mike, is how busy are you doing this at a time when you're not out playing anyway? I mean, I know Tuesday night you got...
Sure, um, obviously, you know, if the league's out there, and I only have one course of them, then it's not available. That's how Twilight works. Um, so if it's during the summer, um, and it's a Tuesday night, it won't work. Um, we typically start Twilight at two o'clock, and between two and three is probably the busiest time for selling Twilight. Um, basically, after three thirty, you're the only people that would be out there, team off. So I don't think it impedes anything that we do currently.
Mike, could we have, uh, Twilight on Tuesday and a Twilight on Thursday, you know, lemonade membership? And...
Um...
When you generate just about the same amount?
Sure, well, I think if we offer it on two, Mike, the revise with days, I think Tuesday probably won't work with the league being out there, but we could choose whatever days, and, and to be honest with you, I don't feel this necessarily has to be a membership. We could just sell an unlimited Twilight package, if we will, I, I don't have any preference to that. Um, but we sell Twilight on a daily as far as regular, uh, as a regular routine, um, so I'm not...
No, I was, I was thinking a Twilight league with the prizes and everything else, like...
Oh, sure, yeah, so we, yeah, so we're good.
The bar of all is gone, so...
Sure, I, I follow you.
And that would...
We could offer another Twilight league, for sure, I don't know if that benefits these folks here looking for that. Um, but yeah, we could, we could have a, a second summer league absolutely, if you could. Um, and maybe it's a different format from the one we do already, maybe it's a couples Twilight league.
As opposed to a different membership, is what I'm thinking.
Um, again, I don't think that benefits these six, six or seven folks, but I mean, I think it's definitely, uh, an avenue we could go to.
Yeah, they're not driving revenues.
Right, yeah, it's definitely somewhere we go to...
Not necessarily a level of six percent of, of, of running, maximizing our revenue.
Absolutely.
As far as making an official Twilight list last night, I don't think...
The problem is you're gonna lose these people who don't want this, is that right?
That is correct.
Can't go up on something here if somebody says they're not gonna...
I, I agree with that as well, but I...
I mean, if you wanna offer daily specials, you know, after three thirty play, I don't care about that, I'm not gonna make it membership.
Okay. Honestly, it's a lot cheaper to play late after the game, I don't see how this is...
I would say the six or seven people, she, we should promote towards a loyalty card, should then give them a, a discount, right? To play at that time. I don't know if our loyalty card provides Twilight discounts or early, one hour earlier. I understand it, and I've done Twilight memberships in the past plenty of times, uh, depends, I, I had weekend Twilight passes when I had five days of leagues.
Let's, let's work with passes and packages and not memberships. That's my presentation.
If you need my vote, I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, we can, uh, we'll move forward with that. Um, okay, now let's talk about percentages. I know we had a discussion, obviously, we were talking about the, the large capital improvement projects that will be doing next year. Um, and we had some discussion that maybe three percent is not a large enough increase. Um, so they, uh, brought back a three and a five percent increase proposal for the board to discuss, and, um...
All right, I'll go first. I think we have to do several things, a couple of things. One, I think we have to realize that we're spending a lot of money on the golf course. Whether it's through assessment money or membership money or what have you. We're gonna spend close to two million dollars, and give or take a couple hundred, whatever it is, in the next eighteen months. And that's a fact of life. So the membership has to be told properly what exactly we're doing and how we're spending, and how we're gonna try and regroup some of this money. I personally, and some people didn't, I think that we should go up five percent for the next three years, but... Because we're gonna spend all this money on the golf course, and it doesn't come from, uh, you know, like my mother used to say, there's no money tree out in the backyard, because we don't pick the bills off of them. But I also think it's critically important that everybody knows, because most people doesn't know, don't know what's going on. So like I would suggest, the membership kits for next year, there's a letter saying, oh, by the way, your membership rates are going up because the following is gonna be spent on the golf course in the next eighteen months, and we need your help to offset some of these costs. Because they'll be able to figure it out very simply, we raise it up, it's, you know, not even gonna come close to that and what like that we're gonna be spending. So hopefully, they'll be able to figure out that there's a lot of money coming from the district that's gonna go towards the projects, and their money will help, but it's nowhere near for the company. So I'm a big proponent right now, under the circumstances, of, of taking it up five percent, but critically important, twenty percent.
Five percent fixed for three years. Not five percent, five percent, five percent, but high...
Five percent every year.
Five percent every year?
Yeah. Plus, the other thing is, it's not true that we are a thousand dollars lower than...
Yeah, we, we are, we are about a thousand dollars lower. That is still, I believe, keeps us a thousand dollars lower than our nearest competitor, which I would call Highlands Ridge. Uh, I think their family membership is up around six thousand, uh, if I'm correct, so...
I, I say five each year, if you guys wanna put up with a different number, I'm open to that, that's why.
I think if you wanna hit them first, in the first year with five percent, but then you have to go down four or three, or whatever.
I also think, and we discussed this, I don't know if this, okay, I think that, uh, if you look at the boys, the greens are in pretty good shape, the airways are in pretty good shape, tee boxes are coming along. But I, everything outside of that is crap, it's all dirt. And I challenge them, uh, to say, you gotta come up with a plan to fix it, like Earl was coming up with a tree plane, that's part of it. But you also have to come up with a plan to eliminate all the dirt that we have in the place, what are we gonna do? But you also have to come up with a plan to eliminate all the dirt that we have in place, what are we gonna do? Some form of landscape, and this will cost money. And if we're gonna commit ourselves to making these courses the best that Highlands County, not just the actual course, but the surroundings and everything, I think we have to spend money.
Sure, and during the discussions to that point, the idea was that that extra 2% increase, we would definitely take that and put it right back into the maintenance budget, and not necessarily change the bottom line, but. That, yeah, it's 20, about $20,000 if we can totally back on this, but.
I mean, you look at the property. For those projects, the beautifications, trying to make, trying to take areas that now cost us money to mow, make them more natural areas that are, have less cost of maintain. I mean, swift mud is going to not allow us to irrigate rough. So I mean, those areas that are outside the irrigations, how do we clean them up? Make them look the best they can look with low maintenance going forward. I mean, even when we do Kikina, we have a maintenance going forward, cost, but it's not hot. It's pretty small.
Six green to 70 on the year. It's just dirt, I mean, it's just nothing but dirt. And it's from an attractive standpoint, it's an embarrassment. And I don't think going down the road that we should accept that, I think we should work, start to make improvements on the course.
You mean that's, you're saying very own lessons, huh?
I'm talking about when you leave the green on six, and you drive over to the tee box on seven in between.
Ah.
Those are the type of areas that we never addressed because, quite frankly, they weren't that important at the time, and I agree with that too. But now that we've gotten the other things under control, it's now time to address those.
And I will speak a little bit about labor, I mean, everyone, we talked a little bit about the minimum wage going up. It goes up to $10 on October 1, and goes up a dollar a year. It doesn't necessarily affect us real heavy the first couple of years, because we pay a lot of our employees over that $10 rate. When we start getting to 12, 13, 14, we're projecting some pretty big increases in labor costs. So we're gonna either have to figure out how to save it, you know, utilize less labor, or pass on the expense through pricing. So I mean, by going three years in a row, as Mr. Brooks, Supervisor Brooks has put out there, you're kind of getting a little bit ahead of it. And it's the same thing, we can make those adjustments during the budget, whether we want to do the beautification projects, to try to make it so we can raise the rates going forward that we charge, justify the rates of the membership, number one, but raise the rates to the public, number two. So I mean, going forward that way, also, by being ahead, we could also, if we chose not to do those beautification projects, put that money to the bottom line and hold for future issues.
You know, if you wanted to say two years at five each, and we're seeing about a third year, I'm just looking to see if we can make improvements on it.
Just so I know, I did some research, and according to our ordinances, we have the ability to revise rates from time to time. So basically, as long as we give, we have to do what's become of the proposed rate schedule. It has to be published 10 days prior to a public meeting, that's the only requirement. So you can change it as often as you want, as long as you.
I think about outside rates or the membership?
Any rates, any rates at all.
Well, I think for the fairness of membership, we can do that one time.
Well, I think he's getting back to the 50% off program, if you wanted to end it earlier.
Yeah.
Maybe.
You make any bad delay.
Understand that.
Basically, what I'm saying is unless you specifically publish something that says this rate will be good from time A to time B, you can change it at any time. Through that process.
So I'll start dividing it 5, 5, and 5.
So 5% increase in three years. No, I think you have to offer something else, a sliding scale or some kind, 5, 5, and 3. I think you have to, and I, justification is certainly there, but you have to have an endpoint too.
Absolutely.
I, I, I intend for original, but I, I don't want 5%. It's just my opinion, I certainly go along with what the board wants, but, and it might be representative of the number of friends I have. But I know one friend that would okay with 5% rate, so maybe I don't have many friends. But it's just my opinion, and that's fine, but.
There is.
I certainly, I'll certainly support my fellow supervisors in what they do.
We didn't.
I don't want a 5% rate.
We did not take any increase lightly. Obviously, it's for, you know, there's reasons, we're being passed along costs also, and there is major investment from the board forward, so it's how do you, you know, if we're going to try to be a solvent business, we have to make tough decisions. You know, and I hate putting on there, you know, rate for people, because no one wants to pay more. But I believe that in the end, they'll all justify that, they see a product they're getting great value at, and they'll move forward that way, and while they won't necessarily like it, it'll happen. We are moving rates all over the country between 5 and 15% for membership, ultimately based off of the fact of how much the membership is paying to.
Nobody likes pricing.
Correct.
But I don't like spending $2,000 on the golf course.
Absolutely.
And not getting anything from anybody.
And I understand your position, and I usually go always with recommendations, but in this case not. But it sounds to me like you've got too many, is what you have to add, is that?
I think we have to work that way. I mean, with the improvements coming into the golf course and the minimum wage being raised, I have two daughters that have their own business and sitting all up, everybody that is a business is having to increase rates.
Now, I think.
We are a business.
And I, obviously, if we can commit to a rate for this year, I don't know if we can commit to an increase next year at this point. I don't know how that works with future boards or anything like that.
I'm tired of hearing this, though.
I'm just, I don't have an issue with it.
Boy makes a decision, it becomes public party, that's a decision.
My point is.
Plus, all three of us are gonna be here next year.
We all make a decision based off of, and we're building things for performance, right? We make business decisions, we make, you know, if we put 5, 5, and 3 in the pro forma, it's kind of shows where we should be in revenues and expenses lines to the bottom, you know, we can pass those on. We did 3, 3, and 3 when we did the pro forma, so I mean, it'll be there, so we can discuss with Dan if we have to make this hard decisions over the board.
I'll go with 5, 5, and 3, I don't agree with it, but it's a good compromise.
Dan, what do you think?
I think if you're ever gonna do five, this is here to do it.
I mean, we're 6,500 for a family at Lake Ashton. It's going up 3%, and they do not have the facilities that this property does.
Then I would suggest this, let's do five, post 5, 5, and 3, and let's keep good records so we can see what our attrition is in October. And do we need to adjust, if we need to adjust back to 5, 4, 3, then we can do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
1% is $10,000 off.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not, on the grand scheme, it's not a pure.
Right.
Okay, sounds like, if you're talking $95 for a thing, that's the difference between 3 and 5. It's a year. $95 to be. I mean.
Let's do 5, 5, 3.
So for $95, the golf course was gonna give us $100 for trees last month.
The pool, wasn't that much, did it?
Okay, so moving forward, we will, we will go with a 5% upgrade, and we will, we will put in our pro forma 5, 5, 3.
But it's critically important to give the membership a letter, explain it to them.
Tell them.
We will definitely put together, I don't know if it was done in the past, I will definitely cover a letter in there explaining what's going on.
I'll tell you nothing, and make it just a copy of membership package, so everybody knows what we're doing.
That's pretty, I think that's pretty standard with a membership package, to have a basic cover letter on the general manager.
Last year I got an application form, one piece of paper.
Me too.
It's like that, if you're a member already, you only get one piece of paper. This year we had to make an exception.
Absolutely.
Trail people all over.
I just, I just want to point out, we've done this before. A couple of times before, in my past six years, and there were four people. And by the time we got to voting to accept it, there was change, we'd. So that is, that is possible, and if you. Yes, yeah, so just so everyone knows, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, I mean.
The three of us are doing this, but it could, it could.
We're putting together a budget, we're hoping it gets approved. We're putting together a budget again next year, and I'm sure we'll have the same discussion.
I assume it won't change.
Well, I'm voting against 5%.
And you'll vote against it?
Yeah. But there will probably be 5, that's all I'm, I'm just making that.
And you know what, you live with the decision that the boy makes, that's the problem, what you're doing, the boy makes a decision, that's it, it's an official record.
David, is that my correct?
Well, as I say, once it's made, once the decision's made, yes, the decision's made, but there can always be a proposal to change that, and if it gets enough board, some board in that can have, I'm just saying that's, that's how it works.
And I hope it doesn't change, but I just, you know, I had some bad feelings and hard feelings, so.
Yeah, we do a budget every year, so it would be part of the budget process.
All right, unless anybody has any further comment or questions on the membership rates, I'll move on to page 8, which is.
Yeah, just wondering before we leave that, that paragraph that you wrote up, you guys had a discussion about things like.
It's gone. Yeah, that was solved with the 50% off program.
Okay, double major. Just want to start off with a correction, the family executive membership states on this rate sheet of under the age of 50. The, it needs to coincide with our membership packets that state 50 and under, so next time you see this rate sheet, it will say family executive membership, age of 50 and under, so that includes those who are 50. Just for cohesiveness between the documents.
Perfect.
Do we really, I mean, this is still on the rates, do we really want to continue to have a junior executive rate from a person?
Oh, yeah.
We do?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Then, that's not a baby.
That's okay with you?
Yeah.
Let's see, so the Twilight membership, we scratched, so we'll update the rates for the membership on there. The cart storage, I believe that $15, I don't know if they have not increased that over several years, if anybody has any. If nobody has any opposition to it, then we recommend to go to $100 to 550 for cart storage. I must see that.
I do like much of the rate sheet, we discussed changing the philosophy of maximum.
We did, we're getting there, he's going through the top first.
Yeah, we're up at the top mark, we'll get down to that. With the driving range memberships, currently, it's by membership. We're given, the leader of membership is given a $200 range key included in their package, and you can upgrade that to unlimited. I know we had some discussions of different ideas of how we could do that differently, whether we still include driving range, or we don't. It's a discussion we need to have, I don't know if any supervisors have any opinions on how we include driving range membership.
I do. Our driving range is the only facility in Highlands County that is like this, and we're putting a lot of money in to improve it. The whole driving, the whole practice facility, it's not just a driving range, it's a practice facility. And with all that being said, I think, even though we're going up to 5%, I think offering $250 for a family membership is just, I don't think that's right. I think that we need to go up, if we're, this is an excellent place to increase our revenues. Not by much, but everything counts, so I think we need to go up on all of our revenues in the driving range.
So on this rate sheet, we have it as just the unlimited upgrade. As far as the, we've already included the $200 range key, it's already included in the package, no extra cost, was that?
I'd say, yes.
Can I take that out and put together plans for that?
Yes.
So do you want to go up?
I don't, I, I, I don't think. I think we have to go up some on all across the board. Uh huh.
Well, it's 175 now.
Oh, it's 175 now?
We did propose an interest to the unlimited, but not all members joining it, there's some members that take their free $200 range card.
It's 175 now for either a single or a family.
Correct, so in the original proposal, we did, we proposed splitting it to a different price for a single membership and a different price for a family, and we also did an increase as well. Now, that, that, I, I mean, I guess that's okay, I guess the discussion on the free $200 inclusive range package is what I think I'm looking for clarification on.
Yeah. And that comes square.
That is, that is, it's not on this page, so.
It's far.
So either we can, we can either keep including that, or we come up with another package plan, do we charge members $100, and they can get $150 in the range, and just not have it totally free? I mean, we could give them a rate, or we could give them a deal.
Let's don't do the, that's what I'm talking about, don't do the free.
Right.
And then just give them a rate on the 250, and when they come back and fill it, then you can do it that way, the same way. I'm a little, I don't think that you need to give a range membership with a full, a practice facility.
So we should put together a plan to.
That's what I'm asking.
Bring back to the board for the next.
Can you give, can you give me some different options?
Uh, yeah, I think I understand what you mean, we'll, we'll put, so what we do. Her proposal is to eliminate referees, and she's proposing to remove the free balls and putting together a a package, if you will.
A package.
Where they'll get a deal, but they still have to pay for it.
But they don't have to pay. I just think, I just think there's better ways to do it.
I have a tough time, I think, I don't want to capitalize the membership, if you want to choice your outside, the guys, in my mind, the ones that buy that anybody does that stuff, the three will be love more, as soon as we're outside playing.
Uh, well, this is for anybody.
No, but I assume more outside play than anybody else, right?
Right, but the unlimited range plan is a members-only, third of this, we don't have an unlimited range plan for public.
I think I want to take 5% and take away a couple hundred dollars worth of benefits in the package.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying, the range is, the practice facility is a moneymaker that we need to capitalize on, and I want ideas from your staff on how we do that.
I'd like to take advantage of public play, so I think the bucket thing is raise the rates there. Plus, the other thing you gotta remember is the balls are, what everybody fix it with.
Sure.
But that's, but, okay.
Well, I mean, we're in Florida, there's a lot of hockey ranges anyways, those are limited flight balls. Right, they're just that way.
I don't.
Yeah, I'm just out there, myself personally, I'm out there to either loosen up or trying to work on something, it's not necessarily.
I mean, I can help if you change the driving range rates, the driving range bucket cards, I'm good with that, and you're already taking up the memberships. So I mean, I'm going, I mean, I'm a singles, I'm going for 175 to 200.
For the rest.
Who's a family, who's going for 175 to 250, I'm good with that the way it is, and hit the other ones.
So will the public, the public would. So well, the public, the public would purchase their range balls as is. So they're basically, they're going to pay the driving range rates at the 6, 9, and 12 per bucket. The only, the only benefit that we give to the public is that driving range bucket card.
Which is what they group that.
So we basically, those are, those are our range deals. So they prepay for $100 worth of range balls. We will give them basically a free $25 to preload a card in the future. They're still paying 12, 9, and 6 for those balls.
The 12, 9, and 6 is the same as last year?
The 12, 9, and 6 is the same as last year? We went up substantially. We went up, we did have an increase last year to 12, 9, and 6. I mean, that's open for discussion. But it's still going to charge the membership the same thing for those who do not have one.
Well, the next time we come back, those two carry. I think he's done other driving range rates and the bucket card.
Well, the bucket card, we could decrease the, what's that, extra? Well, I, we need, I need a little clarification on that. The range card itself, if we wanted to, we would need to decrease the amount of savings that they would get. We would still, if we're raising the public rates, just raising the 6, 9, and 12 would be, or you're actually increasing their rates.
And exactly, what is a summer like Westman's card?
That is... That is something that we've had on our rate sheet before. We actually don't, the district actually sells them. Do you guys still do that in the office down there for resident cards? So basically, we have a resident rate, residency rate. So we try to get those folks to get a resident card so we can identify them as a resident. So they can go over to the recreation office, I believe.
Right.
They'll pay $10 and get their picture taken, get a resident card. And then they'll come and say, I'm a summer resident. And they get to, the summer residents get the lowest rate. As far as rate sheets goes, just give them a range this time.
So I think that transitions into the rates. And we were looking at setting a minimum rate, which would be the resident member guest rate, which is on this sheet. And the off-street rate that's actually on here, we would like to propose that they all go up $10. So we can take advantage of technology. So if we have a minimum and a maximum rate, and they're not really even subject by calendar, we can then, if we're at a 90 percentile utilization, we may be able to up the rate 8, $10, right? Or 8, 10% at some point in time. So it's a way, you know, to really put dynamic pricing into effect. If, if it's a heavy, where it's overcast, 60% chance of rain, we may end up right at, you know, maybe a dollar or two over the resident member rate. Because we have low utilization, we're just trying to get people out there who, that savings will get them to play. But in higher utilization areas, we want to make sure that we're maximizing revenues. You know, and we do have limited number of tee times because of the membership place. So we want to really make sure that instead of it's $35, because it's always been $35 on Sunday or 38. And we've been slowly moving it this year. But I'd like to get it to where it's more computerized. Let's take the human aspect out of it. And it's very easy to do. And then once we see that, you know, we, we may be charging 38 on Sundays when we could be getting 42 or 44. And that's something that can go a long way in getting us, you know, where we can start paying back some of this capital or at least being a solvent business.
You give the rest residents too. If you give them really, really good rates and you don't monitor it, what's there to join, to join the block here?
Well, the residence rates are listed there. That would be our, that would be our floor, what I'm talking about. We would never go, we would never go below the residence rates. And then the ceiling is wherever we want. It's kind of like the hotel business. You walk in the hotel and it's $300 on the back door. But no, I'm staying there for $125, right? Or 100. It's the same thing. It's, it's based off hotels, airlines, baseball teams. Everyone is basing the pricing off utilization. So it's unfortunate, you know, that not everyone pays the same. And that can sometimes cause issues at the counter. But we're moving towards more and more free pay. Not so much here, but I'd like to see it that way. Because when we go to prepaid tee times, if you pay for a fours, then you get four people to show up. Because it takes a long time to get that, when three show up, to get that fourth money back. It's at least a week.
I'm good with it.
Thoughts?
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's okay. I just want you to make sure that people know more. You know, I told you about that incident where the dad brought the rate sheet.
Yep.
I mean, that's where he's confused. That his friend waited for 20 bucks. He bought a third of a membership and thought his friend would have to pay whatever was on the rate sheet.
Yeah, and I would always say that.
That's, that's going to happen, but it should be explained.
We have tiered rates throughout the day, and we need to explain better that we're moving more to a dynamic system based off of utilization. So if we are at a slow period of time, it may be a less expensive time. And when we're going to base it off of helping members decide whether it's worth a membership, it would be like an average NCR. So their average rate would be...
That's what his point was. Because he, he said, I joined because I thought I was going to have to be paying $48 for a rate.
Yeah, we need, you know, unfortunately, the person at the counter just needed to explain, well, that's based off an average. You know, sometimes we're 60, sometimes we're 20.
I believe that situation was after Twilight. But basically, other than that, we, the resident rate is the lowest rate. Even now, and it will be in the future.
I think the last thing that we had that we wanted to touch on is alcohol pricing. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, with what's going on, we're expecting increases. We're budgeting for like a 10% increase in alcohol, which would end up being roughly 50 cents a drink going forward. You know, it's just, wanted to make the border where... I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
We're talking next month.
Next month. October 1, not now.
You're going to let a non-drinker vote?
I assume a non-drinker would vote to jack it up more.
Well, being a non-drinker, I'm going to go back if you lower the price of ice tea.
Being an occasional drinker, I'm okay. I mean, the thing, and I'll tell you, what I brought up to these guys, the new ones, on their budget, I'm concerned about their aggressive stance on food and drink revenues, beverages. I just, they've got 0.2% plan increase. And I just think it's really scary. That's, I pushed it out to them, they felt very comfortable with it.
I will say, you know, obviously, anytime we're looking at top lines like that, you know, we are looking, you know, we did back that down from what the original pro forma was that we gave you in January, based off of sales off the first quarter. It's also something that we can control. It's kind of like we're showing right now, that we can either do it controlled through labor, controlled through expenses and cost of goods to make that net contribution roughly very similar. We'll manage to the bottom line. Yes, it is an aggressive budget growth, but it is something that this facility has shown that it can do in the past.
It basically reflects pre-covid numbers.
Yes, I know. You and I spoke about it. I just went to Florida out of the other one. He said, all I was saying is go back to 2018, 2019. And it's probably a lot more realistic.
I mean, we certainly can...
An increase of $150,000 on the back.
Yeah, and it's, obviously, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be a challenge. Like, again, we manage to the bottom line.
If the board would like us to do that, we can put the top line numbers there. And we'll, we'll adjust the numbers right now and make it, you know, the bottom line's still going to stay the same.
That's just my opinion.
Well, so page nine and 10 are summaries of that budget. Obviously, those will adapt when we put the 5% membership increase in there. Move on to, say, page 11. Those will adjust with the 5% increase in there. Obviously, it will not affect outside, residency rounds, projections there. Everybody seemed to be happy with our other revenue sources on there. As far as merchandise, driving range, cart storage, projections. Obviously, we touched on food beverage revenue, which is on page 12. Everybody seemed very comfortable with that. With the fact that Mr. Brooks thought it was a hair high. It doesn't sound like we're going to adjust it down.
No beverage revenue.
Beverage revenue. So what that means, say, if, unless anybody has any other comments on revenue numbers, we can move on to page 13 as our operating labor. I feel like those are all three will align.
Well, let's, can I turn this around a little bit? We've went over the budget with you. Does anybody have any concerns over the labor expenses lines? I mean, obviously, we know where the, we went, talked about the EBITDA line, which is kind of what we control with there. We can go line by line. We have all data to sit here and do this if you want. But if you, you know, if you have, I assume you all have places to be in time that you want to do stuff. So is there concerns over any of the labor, the expenses, or anything else that we need to change before our next budget run?
I got to tell you, I feel like in general, and I wasn't ready to say anything, is that you guys have thought this is the best plan you guys have presented in the four, five years that I've been on the board. So I congratulate you on that. Most realistic budget also that you presented us. Certainly, I appreciate that, too.
I don't have any concerns about the budget, but I did want to talk about shotguns. You want to do that in the next time?
I just...
You want to do that in the house?
I, I guess, if we're, if we're prepared for this, if you want to bring up something, then that's fine. Does anybody have any other questions on the proposed budget?
Brother, our conversation, you guys are going to be, you're going to show us a little better about how line items are going to cope.
Yeah, I do have these things that I'll get to you. So yeah, that, I mean, obviously, I'm aware of...
Hi, I'm going to bring up, and this is a good time to do it because we're proposing a 5% increase. But I think that during January, February, and March, the morning and afternoon shotguns for the member groups, of which we have 22, which is really a lot of member groups. And if we could utilize our tee times, especially in mornings, a lot better if all the groups, and I'm talking about my groups too, that I play, went to an 8:30 shotgun. We have, and I've got the numbers somewhere in this minutes. We have 92 players that play in the morning on Mondays and Fridays alone, that I know for sure, that go in reverse shotguns. And they take up all the tee times. When you're maxing the tee times in the morning, it should be a minimum of 128 players. Where if we did them at a reverse shotgun at 8:30, all the groups on Monday. And I, this is the ones that I studied the most. Then you could sell the tee times before, and you could get more tee times going in. You can bump the number up. Just during January, February, and March, when we're going to be so busy with all the numbers coming in, you could sell some outside resident plays in the morning, and that's, that's the reason. And...
So all the groups, everybody tees off in the morning, do you want to make an 8:30 shotgun?
Your groups, yeah. And, but if, no, if you make the 8:30 shotgun, or reverse shotgun, then you have more tee times to sell either before or after.
Right, so it doesn't affect anybody getting up with?
Well, the opposite course usually has an 8 o'clock shotgun. So there'd be some opportunities in that case. If that, if that, if that shotgun could go to 8:30, that we could actually use that, utilize the rest of the tee times of that shotgun to move that group from the tee time course, which is in reverse, to possibly filling a full 8:30 shotgun, which is more efficient, and opening up some other tee times.
I think probably, correct me if I'm wrong on this. An 8:30 shotgun.
In dogs?
Any guns. Will run in about four hours.
Correct.
An 8:30 tournament's going to run four and a half, five hours. I think I'm okay with this on non-tournaments. I think tournaments got to go back to staying at 8 o'clock.
Okay.
I mean, just so you get the 1 o'clock.
Of course, still just talking for three months, January, February, and March.
Right, you're around that.
Well, at summer time, things are different. So I think her proposal was fair there.
I mean, I would assume if it's January, February, she would be moving this every two weeks.
Monday, Monday, there's, they average 92 players in the afternoon. They have, have 128, so that'd be a 1 o'clock shotgun. And tee times on the other one.
I don't play in the mornings.
Yeah, it basically wouldn't affect the afternoon. It's just going to look some groups that started at 9 to start at 8:30. And it would just, that 30-minute change would make our tee sheet more efficient.
I could set you well, put something for it. Because my Monday and Friday ladies groups play at 9:15 or 9:30 during the winter time. And if they go to 8:30, then we can sell more tee times. I'm not looking at just those groups. That's all I'm saying. And to be fair, then you have to follow all of the morning groups.
Correct.
I agree with you.
All right, well, we'll write it, we'll put that in writing and present it back to you guys.
And make sure, yeah, thank you.
Just make sure that everybody's aware of that. Because I know in summer, we get reverse shotguns, costs a lot of problems with people coming around. And I think it would create, is best said, but it isn't if you've got a fast group.
Yeah, no, this would actually, this, I think this would actually alleviate that. And not create more. But summertime is a different animal. Obviously, we only have one course most of the time.
Have a conversion.
This is just...
Man, I tell you, if you do that, the big shot, and then they get done.
Yeah, that's definitely a challenge. I think it alleviates that.
I'm just talking those three months. Just to utilize our peak season of best tee times. And we are going, we did send out the letter, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where we're doubling up? Right, two to a card?
We, we, yes, we have sent out several. Yes, we have, we have done that. And somebody else, in fact, might get one today as a follow-up to that. I think it's going out today. I don't know, I assume that.
What day, what day will it be?
The, oh, we said, May 1, we were going to suggest, if you will, that we would like to see all of our members ride two players in a cart. It's not a mandate. Trying to work in that direction. Now, we can revisit that sometimes if everyone wants to put a hard date on that. But at this time, it is...
Yeah, but I think the government's opened up a little state now, right?
Right.
So I think we would, personally, I would recommend going June 1, that's it.
That's it. I agree. All government bodies, including North Florida PGA, GCSE, have, have direct, had basically said two to a cart.
Back to normal.
Back to normal.
I agree.
Back to normal.
Yes, I mentioned to Dan yesterday, because I, I don't golf all the time on there. All I got to do is drive around, and I saw a lot of three and four cart forces still.
Yes, there's...
So I knew your line wasn't working very well.
Right, so the suggestion, it gained a little bit of traction, but you're correct.
I mean, it doesn't take a brain surgery to see four carts.
No. And, and to be honest with you, if, at some point, if we did mandate two to the cart, and somebody was like, hey, I'm a neebic, or I can't risk it, they can pop, they can pay me for that privilege and advantage.
June 1.
So we did.
Whatever, the board has spoken.
June 1, you will start that now.
But try not to do it too.
Oh, we'll keep suggesting, but we'll say June 1st and then...
As a, make it official, you want it official date, as of June 1. Only two and a half weeks.
It's not far off.
It's just going to be a dead, you know, it's all the way around.
Does you have any more?
No, I'm done.
Don't think we have any other highlights?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any public comment? I do that.
Kind of expected at that point.
Yes, sure, I did.
All right, listen, we respect Mike and his whole work here, trying to squeeze every nickel and dime they can out of the members. I, that's business. I understand that. But you know, people in the community, I don't know if they're aware of it. But you know, people in the community, I don't know if they're aware of it, had a little bit of a financial awakening to their insurance costs. Now, I have a choice right now, okay, seven to nine hundred dollars more a year for my roof, which is supposed to be twenty-five years, but you know, I'm there eighteen years, so anything over fifteen years, you'll have, you'll have this surge charge. So I'm looking at a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar roof, thank you very much. I'm quite sure a lot of people in the community are gonna face that situation, unless things change. Problem I have is that people don't understand what is going on, and that suggested the membership letter is excellent, because you have to tell the people you're gonna fix the cot pass, you're gonna fix the grates, you're gonna do something with sand traps, or whatever, whatever. In other words, that they understand the allocation were raised is, is a result. Now, I've seen out there one job done by, throw it with me, Nick Minn, and the rest of the guys are doing a great job. But there's a lot of minor things out there that should be fixed, really. And I hope the new greenskeeper comes in here with a golf committee, walk around, circle those areas. For example, walking off a tee, there's potholes there, my wife has fell several years ago off the twelve tee on turtle. Walking up, landed on the cement, and thank God she really wasn't seriously hurt. But these small items, the walk-offs on the drive-off on the cot pass, they're very severe, three, four, five inches. So eventually, someone's gonna get hurt, or whatever. And Mike has said, yes, this is all budgeted, that cement work, a little tiny cement work on the D F fifteen apertory with a little cone that says, fix me. It's not gonna be fixed till, what, July, the next time they can fix it.
It's the seventeenth time, June, July.
What?
I told you, seventeenth time.
What?
June or July.
Yeah, right. But wait now, I'm looking at a minor thing that could be done probably in a half a day with, with cement and a couple of wheel guards. Because I don't, I don't want somebody to go off there, flip over a golf cart, and now it's a two-hundred thousand dollar lawsuit. Okay, so that's what I'm saying, the little minded things, they should be taken care of by maintenance. It's, it's not a big budget item, and I'd like to see some of these things taken care of seriously. So, you know, with a little of great membership that are here, I'm speaking out on, just gotta be careful of how you're gonna raise everything, your tubes and fines and, and driving range and everything else. Because I tell you what, people, people aren't too happy with this insurance deal. So maybe it'll change, who, who knows? But anyhow, I appreciate the time, you guys hashed out the membership, and I hope it's reasonable. You know, we have to face an increase, I understand that, but I mean, you know, you're talking, well, five, five percent for three years? I don't think so.
It's not?
We're gonna start there and work backwards, I hope. And that's all you can hear while you're at five percent for three.
It's gonna be five, five and three.
There you go.
Five, five and three.
Five, five and three. That's thirteen percent.
Unless you wanna give us a loan for two million dollars, so, you know, if we can take care of the irrigation and debris loops, yeah.
Believe me, if I won the lottery on something like that, you wouldn't have to worry about your budget, I take care of it, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Can we, can we play that back to you?
That's on record.
Give me a money ticket, please.
Anyone else?
You gotta be hidden, right? I don't really have complaint, I have a question. Actually, I got two questions. First one, talking about raising the wage.
Yes.
Along with regulations and taxes that are gonna come down, you're gonna have a problem if you're gonna have inflation. So that should be a consideration when you're doing all this, is what inflation could affect, and that's up to you guys. The second thing is, most courses require four people to go out, not two, four. And the problem is, is you get a shotgun out there, and you got two guys, they're behind you, and they're hitting up, and they can't go anywhere, because if you let them go through, they just head up to the next guys. So why don't you require everybody to go out and force them when possible? When I first came here, I can remember several times, my wife and I were gonna go out, and we ended up playing with this airport, air pilot, airplane pilot, two or three times, happened to be the same guy, just happened to be playing the same time. And it was interesting, and I found some interesting things about airplanes. But one question, why aren't we requiring foursomes, especially January, February, and March?
That'd be their question, because we don't do this kind of.
Okay? Can you, can you answer it?
Yeah, we try to pair up the two-somes, singles with, with threesomes as much as possible. It's not always possible, but it's a challenge, it's, it's always a, it's been definitely a challenge during COVID. But as we kinda set a mandate here, we can definitely make that back to mandatory, if we have two twosomes, we will mandate that you pair up. And we'll be able to do that now, but as, as a total blanket, just saying you can't play without four people, that doesn't necessarily work either. But obviously, any chance we get to, to make two twosomes or foursomes, we'll do so, yes.
To be fair.
How about when they, they get a call, somebody wants to play two, they say they're a twosome, because they have the option of times where they can play two of them. Yeah, we do that every day, because I've never seen it.
The first question that we should.
I see, I see, I see two guys up, twosomes all the time, and when they get in the middle of the group, it just screws everything up.
To be fair, most of the time we get a twosome is when they booked for four, and there's some issues, someone's sick, they have a, they have to go to work or something, then they come in with two, and that's a harder time to pair them up. But it's not necessarily possible, especially if we're doing the shotgun or something like that. You know, the starter should be able to say, there's another twosome over here, let's pair you up, because you'll enjoy it better, but yes.
Do you make any effort, like say, if somebody comes in for nine o'clock, they got a twosome, and they got a nine-thirty, that's a twosome, you say, well, we're gonna pair you with them?
Yeah, it's, it's standard operating procedure to do that, absolutely.
I, I just never seen that before.
Well, it has.
I've seen singles out there.
It has, yeah, well, it happens every day as well, after.
But then, when it's a group, I guess?
I mean, we don't send singles out at nine AM, I promise you that, but at three o'clock in the afternoon, I'm sure you can go out and find plenty of singles. But it is, it has been a challenge, obviously, in the world of COVID, to get two twosomes to pair out with, you know, a lot of folks who are like, you know, it's being my wife, and we're not going near anybody. But those days were coming to an end, and it sounds like June one, I'll ride back to.
I hope you're rough.
Standard operating.
But I, as, as long as I've been here, I've never seen.
Thank you, Ken.
I've had a single guy behind me many times, when I'm in a group.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.